We'll now call a common council meeting of November 2, 2020 to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Here.
Lorick.
Here.
Dukenia.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Here.
Everybody, please rise for the pledge.
Chris, would you start us off?
I sure will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we go on to the minutes, I'd like to ask Catherine to read in the notice of video conferencing.
The City of Oak Creek is authorized to hold this public meeting remotely during the COVID-19 public health emergency. This meeting is being conducted via Zoom video conference with telephone conferencing capability and was duly noticed per the City of Oak Creek Municipal Code and statutory notice requirements more than 24 hours in advance of the meeting. Members of the public have been advised of their options for participation via direct mailing to property owners for public hearings. This meeting may also be viewed at the city's YouTube page, the link for which was contained in all aforementioned notice methods. The meeting recording will also be accessible on the city's YouTube page within 48 hours. When unmuted, all participants must state their name and address for the record, then proceed with comments or questions. Questions and comments may also be entered into the Q&amp;A function within the Zoom webinar control panel. Staff and/or the moderator will monitor this function during the meeting and provide the information requested. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Catherine. Everybody, please take a look at the minutes. And they go back to October 20 of 2020. When you're satisfied there's no errors, omissions, corrections, or questions, look Kowski make a motion to approve the minutes of October 20, 2020.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Hi.
Dukenia.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Gail.
Hi.
Guzekowski.
Hi.
Kirkowski.
Hi. Item four is recognition. This is the City of Oak Creek, and we'd like to recognize and honor the following military service members that are active members. As you all know, in Town Square every year, we have hero banners, and these are active members, and they're on display at Drexel Town Square throughout the summer. And at the end of the year, every Veterans Day, they usually come down. In a normal year, we will celebrate on Veterans Day the service of those that have served the country and present those banners. Unfortunately, this year, 2020, is unlike any other, and we're doing it slightly different this year. So the banners are with us tonight, and we're going to recognize these individuals. Catherine, would you like to give a description, just a brief history, because actually I believe the banners were kind of your brainstorm, and it's really a nice program.
Yeah, so the city about five years ago, this is our fifth year honoring currently serving service members. These are service members that consider Oak Creek their home, and we honor them with a banner. We try to put that up by Memorial Day, and it comes down by Veterans Day, and this is to recognize our service to our city and our country.
Great, thank you, Catherine. And can you just, for anybody out there streaming, if they'd like to pick up their banners, best time to do it and where to do it?
Certainly, we have the banners here at City Hall, so if you'd like to come and pick them up, a family member, if your service member is deployed or out of state, they can pick them up here at our service counter from 7:30 to 4:00 during the weekdays.
Great, thank you, Catherine.
You're welcome.
I'd now like to take a little bit of time and recognize these men and women that are proudly serving our country and announce it to the public so everybody's aware of these Oak Creek natives that are out there serving. First, we have Private Caitlin Brathum. Brathum, oh, wait, I'm sorry, I really butchered. Brathen.
Alanthin.
Okay. She is serving in the Army currently. Next, Senior Airman Hannah Corbett, she's in the United States Air Force. Specialist Jason Corbett, he's in the U.S. Army. Petty Officer Jesse Kovinsky is in the Navy. Petty Officer Davis Rapinski, Navy. Lance Corporal Brandon Rome, U.S. Marines. Petty Officer James Schumacher, Navy. Staff Sergeant Anthony Schultz, Army. Captain Crystal Stanek, Air Force. And Staff Sergeant Kristen Tillit, Air Force. These men and women are from Oak Creek. They deserve our gratitudes, our thoughts, and prayers. So again, I want to thank not only the individuals, but their families. There's a lot of sacrifice that goes on for those parents and brothers and sisters also for those serving. So again, I want to thank all of them on behalf of the city. Comments?
Mayor Dan, if I may. Alderman Dukenia, 3rd District. Certainly, we're acknowledging the very brave members of our community. I would like to add one other individual to that list. We have a resident in the 3rd District, Austin Jost, and he is also a member of the United States Air Force. I believe he's a senior airman. Austin was deployed to Afghanistan and just returned home about 10 days ago. So on behalf of the City of Oak Creek, our sincerest thanks to Austin for his service to our community, and we are very, very thankful for his safe return.
And once again, if you do have an individual that is serving and you'd like them recognized next year, Catherine, I'll let you speak on behalf of that.
Certainly, we have on our website, under, if you search "military banners," there's an application for either the service member or a family member or friend of the service member to complete, and our banners, the deadline for that will probably be March of 2021. Turn in that application to the city clerk's office, and they will be considered for a banner to be hung at Drexel Town Square next year.
Great, thank you. Anybody else have anybody, any questions, comments about the banners? Okay, again, thank you very much for your service. It's appreciated. That was just recognition and no action is needed. Item five is consideration of a resolution for the commendation to Stephen P. Wilding, retiring Fire Department Lieutenant. Catherine, would you please read that into the record?
Certainly, Resolution 12197110220, resolution of commendation to Stephen P. Wilding. Whereas Stephen P. Wilding was appointed a paid on-call firefighter on April 14, 1986, appointed full-time firefighter February 6, 1989, promoted to lieutenant on June 16, 2000, assigned to acting captain from November 19, 2006, to January 17, 2008. And whereas Stephen P. Wilding will be retiring from his position as lieutenant on October 31, 2020, after 31 years and nine months of full-time dedicated service to the City of Oak Creek Fire Department. And whereas during his years of service, Stephen P. Wilding has performed his duties admirably, looking out for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Oak Creek. And whereas Stephen P. Wilding responded to many major alarms utilizing his skills in firefighting and rescue without hesitation. And whereas Stephen P. Wilding is an emergency medical technician in the state of Wisconsin, and during his career has cared for thousands of citizens who were sick or injured, always delivering caring and skilled emergency care to them. And whereas Stephen P. Wilding was the department's lead person for vehicle maintenance and repairs for many years, working with outside vendors and the city's Public Works Department. And whereas Stephen P. Wilding served on the city's Cost Reduction Committee from 1993 to 1995, and was an active member of the city's Health Insurance Study Committee from 1996 to 2014. And whereas Stephen P. Wilding has been a very active member of the International Association of Firefighters Local 1848, and has served as the president for over 20 years. And now therefore be it resolved that the city's best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Stephen P. Wilding and his family in his retirement years. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Stephen P. Wilding, passed and adopted the 2nd day of November, 2020.
Thank you, Catherine.
You're welcome.
I don't think Steve's here tonight, obviously. Anybody have any words for Steve as he goes on to retirement?
Alderman Dukenia, 3rd District. Mayor Dan, I'm sure you're going to have a lot to say about Steve, but just want to say thank you. 31 years of dedicated service to our community. Steve, congratulations and best wishes on your future endeavors.
I was just going to mention real quick, when I did some different ride-alongs with him, one of the times Steve was there, he would also tell me that one of the things they train the newbies with is treat each person as if they're their own family member. So that's something that they hold true throughout the fire department, and it'll always stay with me.
Great. I'll ask Chief Krasik to say a few words. He's with us via Zoom.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. I did correspond with Lieutenant Wilding earlier today. He sends his regrets. He was, due to a previous appointment, was unable to attend tonight's meeting, but does send his thanks for the recognition. I think the fact that everyone in the room has dealt with Steve and knows Steve speaks volume about his dedication to the community and fire service in general. Steve spent over 30 years serving the community as a firefighter and lieutenant, nearly as much time as members of local, where he paid advocating for their rights and certainly for their safety. Alderman Guzekowski, I think you really summed it up right there. The one piece that Steve always took with him, that he always instilled in our newer membership, is to treat everyone we deal with as a family member. I think that's what separates the Oak Creek Fire Department from other departments in the area, that caring and compassion and care that we keep alive. We thank Steve for his service, and we certainly wish him the best as he moves on to the next chapter. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief. Close, I've known Steve for a long time, about 30 years. Actually, Steve was my neighbor at one time. We started out neighbors, became acquaintances, and actually friends. And then through our jobs, we actually represent labor in different capacities, him for the professional firefighters and I through the trades. And then conversely, as roles changed and I got into city politics, we sat across the table, and I became management, and he became labor on that side. It was an interesting paradox, but all through, we were able to maintain a professional friendship and relationship, and never was respect lost. And I, Steve advocates hard for what he believes in. He's a very passionate person. He's very passionate about the service he gave. And Chris, I think you summed it up right. He looked at his fire department as an extended family. He looked at the City of Oak Creek as an extended family, and he gave outstanding service, as all our firefighters do. Sometimes that passion, you know, led him to do things and tried to steer the city in other directions as well, and it showed when he stepped up and he got on cost reduction committees and tried to look at benefits. He always had the city's best interests at heart. And that respect went on to the generation that brought him up. Oak Creek has a long history of firefighting, and they're a tight-knit group, and I think he instills that in the younger group, and I think that younger group will be better for it. I think the fire service is better for it for having his 30-plus years of service. I, for one, wish him a happy, long retirement, and I'm sure on behalf of the council, everybody feels the same way. So Steve, thank you for your service. We wish you a very long and happy retirement. We thank you for your service and all you've done for the City of Oak Creek. Having been born and bred here, it is great to see one of Oak Creek's sons start here and finish your career here. So congratulations. Okay, motion on five, please.
I'll move to approve Resolution 12197-110220, resolution of commendation to Stephen P. Wilding, retiring Fire Department Lieutenant.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenia.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Gail.
Hi.
Guzekowski.
Hi.
Kirkowski.
Hi.
Lorick.
Hi.
Oh, great, thank you. Item six gets us to new business, and we'll start out with an informational, and that will come from Darcy Dubois, our health officer on COVID-19. Darcy, with us?
A.M., good evening. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen so I can share a little bit of data. Here we go. Okay, so as of today, we had, have had 1,570 individuals here in Oak Creek who've tested positive for COVID. That is over 4% of the Oak Creek population. As you're probably all well aware, we've seen a huge increase in the number of new positive cases over the past three weeks. The graph that I'm sharing here shows the weekly number of new individuals testing positive, and you can see just a significant increase in cases since the beginning of Currently, our seven-day average, or our average number of new cases is over 30 cases per day. Sorry, I'm clicking the wrong button here. Here we go. So this shows our average number of new cases. Right now, we're at 31 cases per day. One month ago, it was seven cases per day. So again, this graph just shows that average number, which has also substantially increased over the past month. We've had over 10,000 individuals here in Oak Creek test negative since the beginning of the pandemic. We have also recently seen an increase in the number of individuals getting tested, so this shows the total number of individuals tested weekly. We can see the last couple of weeks have been our highest number of test results come in since the beginning of the pandemic. Currently, the burden, which is the number of new positive cases calculated as a rate per 100,000 individuals, our burden level here in Oak Creek is 793. Again, you can see that it has just skyrocketed in the past month or so. Oak Creek currently has the second highest burden rate in the county, behind one of the North Shore communities. And finally, we have our percent positivity, so this is the percent of positive, or of individuals who are tested, who test positive. So currently, we're at 15.2%. Again, that's, I believe, the highest percent positive that we've seen since we've been tracking that, and one of the highest percent positives here in the county. We've, 25 individuals here in Oak Creek have passed away as a result of COVID, and we've had 1,220 of the individuals who've tested positive who have been released from their isolation period and are recovered. Some additional updates, the alternate care facility that was built at State Fair Park, we heard a lot about that earlier in the pandemic when it was first built, that has opened now and has started serving clients. Local hospitals are reporting that they will likely start to use that facility in the next week or two to try to prevent the hospitals from becoming overwhelmed and reaching capacity. So they will start shifting patients from hospitals to that facility soon, and it will likely be utilized more. It's also being utilized by hospitals across the state. As we know, in some other regions, they are experiencing, the hospitals are already experiencing more patients than they can care for. We have, as a result of the significant increase in positive cases, had to make some changes to our practices here at the health department. So late last week, the southeastern Wisconsin region health officers issued a health alert and call to action to our communities. So the call to action was really just requesting that we work together as communities to take action to slow and stop the spread of disease. And the health alert was sharing information about the impact that the huge increases in cases has had on health department's ability to perform contact tracing. So at this point, due to the large number of positive cases coming in every day, we don't have the ability or the capacity to notify people who have been exposed, individuals who are considered contacts. So right now, we are asking people who test positive to notify their own contacts. We're providing education about how to determine who is a contact and what information to share, but they are notifying their own contacts. We've also developed a prioritization for notifying positive cases, so we are focusing on the younger and the older groups to do those notifications first. We are still notifying all positives and making contact with them, but it's taking longer for us to make that initial contact due to the number of new cases, and we are aware that we may not be able to do that, the full interview with each of the positive cases due to staffing limits. Our goal will be to return to traditional contact tracing as soon as the workload decreases and we are able to go back into that mode. We know that is the best way to stop the spread of disease, but we just don't have the capacity, and we are not alone. This is something that health departments across the state are facing at this point. So as you have also likely heard, our South Shore testing site opened about a week and a half ago. So that is a collaboration between the health departments, Oak Creek Cudahay and South Milwaukee St. Francis, being funded with federal CARES funding, which runs through the end of the year. It's located in South Milwaukee on the old Bucyrus campus on Rossin. It's open Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Fridays, and Saturdays, and it is being staffed by both National Guard and local staff that are being hired with that CARES funding. The site has been extremely busy. If any of you have been over there or been in that area, there is almost always a line when it's open, before it opens, and they have had to close early several days due to running out of the specimen collection kits. So currently, our site is allocated 450 testing kits per day. We have requested additional kits since we, since day one, we have had the capacity to exceed that number. Today, the South Shore mayors did submit a letter to Secretary Designee Palm with that request for additional specimen collection kits, and we are waiting to hear back. We know that testing sites across the state are extremely busy, just like ours, and they are having to prioritize the testing, the specimen collection kits that are allocated. Our testing site will be open through December 9. After that, the National Guard will no longer be available, and as our funding runs out at the end of the year, it likely will not remain open past that date. So as I've discussed, we are seeing a significant and quick spread of disease here in Oak Creek and the surrounding cases, or communities, excuse me. We know that many of those cases are connected to a gathering of some sort. Over 20% of the individuals who are testing positive here in Oak Creek have reported attending a gathering in the weeks prior to testing positive. I would expect that this number is underreported. Many people are hesitant to share that information, and we know that data from across the state and the country reinforces that gatherings are really contributing to the significant increase in cases. We know that many of these gatherings are small, so people are trying to be safer in gathering only with maybe their family members or small groups of friends, but we also know in those smaller intimate gatherings that people tend to not wear masks and may not be social distancing, and we are seeing a lot of disease spread across family members and things like that. We also know that with colder weather setting in, gatherings are moving indoors. We've been lucky to have outdoor gatherings for the past months, but with the holidays coming up and the cold weather, we expect to see, again, an increase in gatherings, which will likely lead to another increase in cases. So now is really the time that we need to take action to slow the spread of diseases. Disease, as I said, the hospitals are reporting that they are starting to be stretched thin, not only with space in the hospitals, but also with staffing. There are many hospitals are starting to experience staffing shortages, which will impact their ability to care for patients that are coming in. Last week, many of the Milwaukee County suburban health departments did issue a recommendation that their communities move back to Phase B of the reopening plan. We here at our council had a comprehensive discussion of the phase reopening plan at a council meeting back in May. At that time, we did commit to bringing any decision regarding moving phases back to the council. So I am here looking for direction regarding any messaging that the council feels would be appropriate to share with our community, including residents and businesses. Going to share my screen again. So we have been hearing from businesses again who are reaching out and are concerned about the increase in cases and are looking for information about how to operate more safely. We know that many businesses have implemented comprehensive safety plans and have been working hard since the beginning of the pandemic to operate as safely as possible. So this is just, I put up this phase reopening table again that we looked at back in May, just for your reminder. So as a summary of Phase B, it does recommend limiting gatherings to 10 people max. It also recommends limiting retail, restaurants, bars, salons, and spas to 50% of capacity, and recommends limiting gyms and other places of public amusement to a capacity limit of 25. We do believe that limiting the number of people gathering in one space will help to slow the spread of disease. As a reminder, these recommendations in the phase table are only recommendations. Businesses would still have the ability to choose the actions that they're right for them, and no enforcement is required as part of this phase reopening plan. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have at this point.
Questions for Darcy, comment? Ken?
Hey, Darcy, thanks for the update. Do you have a feel for, I don't know, the testing site, is that a appointment-only or is that a voluntary, open, random testing opportunity?
Good question, yep. No, there are no, no appointments are needed. It is a drive-through testing site, able to test anyone ages five and above, and it's first-come, first-served.
Are you using strictly lab-based PCR testing, or do you have rapid tests available there, or what's your?
Yep, that site is strictly lab-based PCR testing.
Do you have a goal to get rapid testing availability there, or what's the prognosis for that?
Not at this point. I think the rapid tests right now are being allocated to other types of settings, nursing homes, some healthcare settings are using those, some colleges and universities. So those are being pretty carefully regulated by the federal government for the most part, who gets those. That would also be a little bit more challenging for that drive-through setting if they were waiting, you know, it takes about 15 minutes.
Yeah, I know there's logistics involved.
Yeah, but, so right now, there's no plans. Most of, all of the community testing sites are using those PCR tests.
And what is the prognosis for, you know, your, you know, unfortunately, the positivity rates become some kind of goalpost, but it really is truly a benchmark of whether or not you're doing enough testing, and obviously, no one's doing enough testing because the positivity rates are still too high. Well, so what is your prognosis actually acquiring more testing capability there?
You know, we have requested them. Right now, we're kind of at the mercy of the state as they are determining with the National Guard testing sites how those specimen collection kits are allocated. They're aware of, you know, the percent of positivity in our region and are hopefully going to be prioritizing, but I think we will continue to advocate for as many specimen collection kits as possible. Last week on Friday, when the site did get permission from the state to do as many tests as they could during the seven hours they were open, they did nearly 700 tests. So we know they have the capacity to do a lot, it's just that they don't have enough kits right now, so we continue to advocate.
You don't have to be from Oak Creek or South Milwaukee or St. Francis. Is anyone allowed?
Correct, anyone is welcome, yep.
And then, Ken?
Yeah.
Anyone else here? Steve?
Darcy, I saw recently on a Facebook post that there's some spot on the website where you can, this may or may not even be your department, because I don't know, that you can go in and report establishments and such that aren't following guidelines. Are you familiar with that?
Yeah, we've had, since the mask order was put in place, we've had a web form where people can submit a complaint if a business or public place is not.
How many complaints have you received, and what type of enforcement is done? I mean, who does it, police or health department?
It's done by the health department, although we're working with Dale Pittman, our sanitarian. And it's really not enforcement, it's just focusing on education. So I can get you the number of complaints, I don't have that offhand.
No, I just, no. I don't, I was just curious.
But yeah, it's really heavily focused on education. So when we get a complaint, he makes a phone call, makes sure that the entity is aware of the mask order and what's involved in that, and, you know, offers support or things like that, but there's no real enforcement mechanism.
This may or may not be the right venue for this, but I know that when the, the reports come out, you talk about this burden rate, it's like 350 is what the school district uses, and we're approaching, what, 800, 700 or something? Could you remind us how you come up with this burden rate, or where it originates from, and how it all fits into how you make your decisions on the recommendations? Because I'm sure it's no secret that the school board members have been taking a hit, and even a few of us have had to make a defense there with the fact that this burden rate's going up, the school district uses 350, and I'm just trying to get a better understanding of where that all came from and go from there. Can you help me out with that?
Sure, yep. So the burden rate is a metric that's used, widely used across the state and the country to have an understanding of the current level of disease in a community. So to calculate the burden rate, we look at the number of new cases over the, over a 14-day period, and then that's calculated as a rate per 100,000 people. So we divide that number by our population, multiply by 100,000. The reason for calculating it as a rate is so that we can compare our community, it gives us a standardized number. We can compare to other communities and understand how our disease. We can compare to other communities and understand how our disease levels relate to theirs. And then we can have those categories to kind of understand how that fits into the scheme of things. So those categories that were shared, you know, the moderate, moderately high, high, critical, for example, those were developed based on the state guidelines and also the Harvard Population Health Institute worked on those critical levels. So those were not decided by the health officers, but.
Well, 350, where did 350 come in? I mean, I, I understand that this is a school district issue, but I'm fielding phone calls and emails and stuff, and I keep trying to let folks know that, you know, that's a school board issue, but I'd like to, I'd like to give them some somewhat educated answers. And I have no idea, did they just pick 350 out of the hat or was that a, or what?
350 is a threshold of the critical level of burden. So the Milwaukee County Health Officers made a recommendation based on guidance from the state health department and the Harvard Population Health Institute to make a recommendation that at 350 schools should consider offering virtual classes to all of their students. So our school board did decide to adopt that recommendation as their metric.
Okay, thank you.
Greg, anything?
Thank you, Mayor, yes. I'm just, I know Darcy had brought up looking for a recommendation from council in, in switching to Phase B. And I would, I mean, I would strongly urge that and strongly back that. As somebody who now has positive case in the House and kids in the school district, I can see that our burden rate is the second highest in the county. I know Milwaukee has already kind of backed up to limit down to 25% it is capacity at certain venues. Our Phase B recommendations are at 50%. So, so I see no, I see no harm in that. I mean, after all, these are recommendations. And again, these are recommendations that health professionals are coming up with and saying are in the best interest of the community. So I, I feel no holdup supporting that and, and pushing for that if that's kind of the way the council ends up going.
All right, thank you for getting back to the, the question on it. And again, we're, we're going to get there either way because, what's up?
Agenda.
It's not agenda, no, but she's asking for some direction as we're moving forward. So again, Darcy's just looking for some direction on where we might go if these numbers don't cease going skyward. So, you know, whether, regardless of how we got at the numbers, we're at 25 deaths, 15.2% positive and a burden rate over 750. It's not getting our kids back in school. I feel, I've, I've gotten a lot of phone calls too. Whether it's, it's complaints about businesses, events, why, why we, why, why we're second in the county and we just can't seem to get control of it here in Oak Creek. And again, it ain't due to lack of trying, it's just the practices maybe we're doing. Maybe we aren't diligent enough in the masks or the hand sanitations or, you know, maybe it's capacities, you know? And people are seeing some of these places of businesses and, and they're wondering why they're way out of whack, you know, and, and they're at full capacity at 75% or whatever they're doing and a social distancing ain't going on or business ain't enforcing masks that they've been asked false. And again, they're recommendations. As Greg said, they're recommendations, but, but for whatever reason, our numbers aren't going right and that ain't helping us achieve the goal of getting back to normal. So, you know, I think she's just looking as these health, health officers get together. And Greg brought up Milwaukee's making moves. At, at some point in time, we're going to have to probably rehash this discussion based on what the rest of the county is doing and seeing. So, and quite frankly, we'll probably have to do it sooner than later based on our numbers. So, you know, Darcy is looking for it. Again, I, you know, I, you'd have to look at it. And again, our numbers are so far out of whack, I don't know where everybody else sits in the county, if we're double or if we're just slightly ahead of everybody else. But either way, it's, it's definitely a problem and we're not close to getting our children back in school. And that seems to be the main issue. You know, whether that number's 350 or whatever it might be, we as a community have to get back to that 350. No one policy or individual can get us there, we got to do it together. So, you know, we got to try to find the means. And right now, according to the CDC and all the health agencies, the best thing we have are masks, hand sanitizers, social distancing, and limiting of, of social events. And that's what we know about it as of right now. So again, Greg, thank you for your, your, your views, you know? It's food for thought and, and gives Darcy some feel of where the council's at as she's talking to other communities. And I think that's all she's looking for. Did I sum that up well enough, Darcy?
Yes, certainly, like I said, we're committed to, you know, getting feedback from the county and letting that decision be driven, or sorry, the council and letting that decision be driven by the council. At this point, I'm aware that Franklin, South Milwaukee, St. Francis, Cudahry, West Dallas, Hales Corners, Wabatoosa, and the North Shore communities have all made a recommendation to go back to Phase B, as well as Greg mentioned, the city of Milwaukee has a separate order that has many of the same or more restrictive capacity limits. So, you know, just wanting to know how Oak Creek fits into that.
Mayor?
Tom? Yes.
If I, Mayor, if I can just add one more thing.
Oh, go ahead, Greg.
I was made aware and some, a couple of people reached out to me that other commi-
We lost your audio, Greg.
Sorry. I, I was just saying, I was reached out to by a couple of people and made aware that some neighboring communities were offering joint statements between city government and the school district. And I, and I know that we are two separate entities, but I think it's important when the school district is noticing the burden rate going up and, and making changes to try to stop it from spreading in the school. And obviously, their goal is to bring the students back into the schools. So I think it would be important for the city to kind of follow suit, to offer kind of a, not necessarily a, a formal joint message, but by showing that we're in this together and, and kind of following suit by maybe offering recommendations that are dialing things back a little bit to try to support this and try to stop the spread in the community.
Thanks, Greg. Comments, questions? Rich, anything? Nothing? Chris?
I, oh, Steve? Well, I would oppose going back to B for the following reasons. We have been trying to tell people what to do and what not to do, irregardless of what phase we were at. And some people just aren't doing it. And you're going to put more restrictions on people as to what they can and can't do. And some of them are just going to tell you to get bent and they're going to do it anyways. So I, the, the, Darcy mentioned earlier about these people who complain and then Dale calls and educates people. I mean, for, for example, I went into a bar recently for a Friday fish fry, walk in and there's three guys yucking it up at the bar, drinking their beer and enjoying life under, under the, the policies that allows them to do that. When we go back to B, these three guys are still going to go to the bar and they're going to yuck it up, drinking their beer. Things aren't going to change for these people. You know, you've got people in this 18 to 29-year-old age range who don't give a damn about this whole issue and are just out there enjoying parties. We can go to A and they're still going to do it. So we need to educate these people.
Understandably, but they're, they're guidelines for the business. We, we need everybody to take a responsible view of it.
You're right.
In the businesses, and the businesses should be enforcing what they're doing.
And the businesses are being responsible because.
Christine went to an enforcement of finding people without masks.
Well.
Now that's, that could be a little overboard too, depending on your point of view. But again, they're at an extreme where they, we're going to have to probably make a decision one way or the other.
But businesses should be allowed to, to take care of themselves without government intervention to the extreme because there's one business in, in DTS who used to have dine-in. The numbers went up and they went back to carry out only. So they're taking that responsible step and saying, we don't want to have the problem, we're just going to go back to carry out only, which was great. I mean, I applaud that business for doing that. We're making changes to our personal routine and I, I don't want to, I just don't want the government to be telling people what they can and can't do when these people should be being responsible themselves. And I know that's, that's kind of like, well, geez, you know, they're not being responsible for, so maybe the government should be telling them what to do. But, you know, the, the schools have been out for over two weeks now, the numbers are still going up. If adults don't, you know, kids, they, when they were going to school, they were wearing masks, they were getting out of school, they're taking their masks off and they're walking home in groups. Okay, what good did that do?
So, Steve, I'm not here to argue how we got here, what it is. We're just saying our numbers are rising and at some point in time, we're going to have to do something countywide.
Oh, not, Danny, no one says we have to do anything. That may be your opinion.
Ken, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not here to open up.
You don't get to set policy here by yourself.
I'm not, I'm not setting policy. I'm trying to just.
It's a discussion.
Trying to aid in the discussion.
But you, you don't get to talk over Alderman Kirkowski with your, with your opinion.
Ken, I'm, I'm just trying to limit this because we can go on all night about.
And it's really not on the agenda, they haven't discussed it anyway.
Ken?
It's an informational item.
Ken, it is an informational item. And what she asked for in the initial thing was just a feel of where everybody's at. We fielded some questions on how we got to the numbers. I'm just asking opinions and the only alderman that gave me an opinion of where he might to, of where they feel is the first and second district alderman of direction for Darcy. You know, on where you feel. So I mean, if you feel you're not going to roll it back, just say that, okay? You, you say it publicly.
Well, when you get that far, be more than happy to.
Well, they're, they're starting to inch that way on the South Shore, it sounds.
I don't care what the rest of the people are doing. I really don't.
Okay, so your opinion is don't roll it back, correct? Or am I putting words?
I'd also say that, you know, this reliance and this fascination with the stupid burden rate, in a city the size of Oak Creek, right from the get-go, you're nearly tripling your, what's, what's going on absolutely on the ground. I always say in everything we do here, you, you absolutely rely on what's going on locally. So be, given our population size, 35,000, 36,000, you're automatically tripling it to get to the 100,000 threshold and then you're using two weeks worth of data. So you're, you're tripling and doubling your number right from the get-go, it's ridiculous. It, it distorts what's going on in reality. But in from the, my, in terms of the community, no one is ignorant, we're in, amidst of the COVID pandemic. Businesses, individuals have made their decisions and will continue to make their decisions with best for them and what's best for their families and best for their businesses. And we need to carry on. We've already seen the state Supreme Court roll back, the governor's attempt to restrict, unconstitutional, restrict capacity again. We're all big adults, we all can take care of our families, we all can make our own decisions, get the government out of the way. This is not something we're going to solve. You can try to manage it, but I'd say stay out of the way.
Mike, any input?
Yeah, as far as, I'm in favor of staying out of the way too. Even though the numbers are rising, number one on the school issue, I would, I would let the health department and the school, school board work together because they're closer to the issue, number one. And number two, unless you're willing to go to a finding system, I don't see anything changing because adults are going to do what adults want to do. So it's, I would say leave it as it is and let, let people take personal responsibility. That's my opinion.
There's a lot of extreme examples like Christine. Chris?
I would agree with Alderman, Toman, and Gel and Kirkowski. I think that, you know, I've gone, we've been trying to make a point of going to local places every Friday to see how things are. Everyone, as soon as you walk in the door, not, not discounting of ours, but, you know, for the most part, in restaurants, the restaurants have been very respectful with their spacing and how they're staging and stacking or not stacking people. So they, they don't want to, they don't, I think they don't want to, they fear going back to what it was, you know, earlier in the year. Now granted, the numbers are there, but I, again, I, you, you have to question how, how we are using the math. It, it just doesn't add up for me always, so.
Okay.
Well, Mayor, you had asked me previously and I, I'm of the same opinion as most of my other colleagues. I know that was the discussion that we had, I believe it was back in May or June, that the recommendations are there, the information is there, individuals need to make then that responsible choice. But as Ken mentioned, it, it's up to the individuals. It's, it's not up to local government, state government, the federal government to direct people as to how to act. I mean, there is no denying, there is a sense of urgency as to, as to how to get a handle on this thing. But, you know, our, our country, you know, gives the rights for people to make their decisions and I, I, I think that we're right in doing that. We, we can go back to the most stringent recommendations. Greg and I appreciate your comments. We can go to the most stringent, but it's still up to the people to, to follow those recommendations. Some will choose to do so, others will not. So I mean, I, yeah, I, I'm of the opinion that, you know, you, you have to let adults, businesses, families make decisions that they feel are in their best interests. Now how, how the school district is able to, to do that and, and make everybody happy, you know, I've, I've had discussions with school board members, there is no way that you're going to make everybody happy. 50% of the people, and I shouldn't say 50, but some will be unhappy with your decision, others will be thrilled with your decision. You, as a governing body, we as a governing body, have to make a decision based upon what we feel. The school district is the same way. They, they have to make a decision based on information, based on recommendations, based on guidelines that they feel is in the best interests of their students and, and the families of those students. So.
Okay.
It's not an easy call, guys, but as far as the city's part of it, I'm, I'm with all of, most of my other colleagues about letting people make their own decisions as to how they're going to keep themselves safe.
Okay, Darcy, you kind of got a flavor.
Can I ask a follow-up question real quick to Darcy, maybe?
Sure, go ahead, Greg.
So whatever happens, if, I guess if we stay where we, where we're at, there are businesses and there are people that look to the health department for the best recommendations based on what health professionals are saying. If we stay in the current phase and a business calls the health department and says, I'm looking for the best recommendation to keep my customers happy, are you going to recommend what our current phase is or are you going to tell them what truly will help them protect their customers?
Greg, that is no secret. I think every business owner is well aware of the fact of what.
Well, let Darcy answer, because she'd have, she'd be on the phone call.
That is a, that's someone looking to skate responsibility.
Right, so we do always share the, the phase that we're in, what the recommendation is, and then we talk about safe business practices that they can implement as far as distancing customers, making sure that they're wearing masks, offering, you know, hand sanitizers, offering other services, things like curbside pickup and whatnot. But, but I do follow the recommendation from the council about the phase.
Okay, thank you. And I, again, I'm not trying to, to have any type of government control or anything like that. I'm just, my one worry is, is the city giving false security by saying, these are our recommendations, this is the phase that we're recommending, even though it's not enforceable? When really stricter precautions could stop spreading this throughout the city. So, but thank you for the answer.
Okay, Darcy.
Mayor, can I finish?
Oh, go ahead.
I mean, I didn't have a chance to finish when I was first talking, I just want to, I don't have anything else to add other than to say that I thought, I thought it was a bit rude to have my comments interrupted. I don't interrupt you, I don't think you should interrupt me.
Well, I apologize for that then, but I'm trying to keep things on the track. Anything else, Steve? Oh, okay, gotcha. Okay, Darcy, I guess that is it. Thank you for the informational. Hopefully, our numbers start to drop down as quickly as they go up and.
Hopefully, our numbers start to drop down as quickly as they go up and we can get kids back and businesses back and everything starts to look better. We'll see. It's, it's hard to believe we zoomed up as high as we did, as quick as we did. But here we are, so.
All of the outdoor activities going on.
Yeah, I know. Go figure. So, okay. All right. Thank you, Darcy.
Thank you, Darcy.
Okay. Item seven gets us to the treasurer's report, another presentation on the 2020 assess valuation, and also the introduction of the new city assessor. And we have Barb with us tonight. Barb?
Hi, thank you. So, periodically, we have Tyler Technologies, the representative, come in and, and just kind of give you an update on numbers and give you an opportunity to ask any questions, some reports with you. And also, as Mayor said, that'd be a good opportunity to let you put a face to a name for our new city assessor. So, at this time, I am going to turn it over to Mark Link. He is the Tyler Technologies Regional Manager for Wisconsin. Mark?
Hello. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time tonight. As Barb mentioned, twofold recap, the 2020 revaluation and an introduction of Robert Kilday. And I'll go ahead and jump to the introduction of Rob. Rob has been with us for a little over two years. He's been in the industry a little over 12 years in multiple capacities. He was brought on as a commercial appraiser and has been transitioning into assessment services and has provided open book or informal appeals over the last two years as well as formal appeals. He's got a good record with us in his past two years. Barb did her research as well when this was first proposed. And we think Rob will be a, a good hit for the city, do a very sound job as the statutory assessor. And we look forward to a good communications in the office there. So, I would ask that the council welcome Rob. And Rob is on the meeting, I believe. Rob, do you have any comments?
Great to be here. Thanks for having me.
Okay. Any questions from the council to either myself or Rob relating to Rob becoming the city assessor?
Questions for Robert. Yeah, Ken.
Mark and Rob, do you guys expect a similar comparable presence in, in the, in city hall and in, in the council staff and elected see you and interact with you? What's your goal on that?
Yeah, there, there's been no change in the onsite assessor hours as they're outlined in the agreement, barring any instruction from the city relating to the COVID situation. But no change in the onsite hours. Rob will be there on Mondays as the assessor.
Robert, would you like to say a few words?
Well, I'd love to, but I don't really have anything too prepared, again.
That's okay. We're pretty informal here.
Okay. Well, and I don't want to sound like I'm running for office since I've already been sort of named to that, but looking forward to the challenge and as well as, as meeting you all possibly in person at some time, you know, in the not-too-distant future, hopefully.
Oh, good. Well, welcome to the city. Appreciate the work. You're gonna find everybody very, very fun to work with here. I've never really had any complaints, you know, other than probably the obvious stuff you've run into, taxes are too high, things like that. But you'll deal with the territory. And, and again, yeah, working with Barb and is, it'll be fine. It'll be just great. So.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. I am absolutely looking forward to it.
Yeah. It's, it's really a great community once you get to know it. And, and again, I, I would encourage you, you know, kind of tour it and get a flavor of it. It's really a unique community. It's large, large area-wise and very different. So. Anything else for Robert? No. Okay. Thank you very much. And again, welcome.
Hi, thank you very much, too.
Item eight is consideration of a motion to approve the renewal with the institutional agencies and custodial agreements for Marshall and Ilzly or BMO Harris under which it delegates its investment authority through December 31st, 2021, and authorize the city treasurer to execute such agreements. Barb?
Hi, just one comment. I just want to make sure we didn't skip over Mark. He was gonna, I think, go through some report in that last item, some numbers for-
Oh, the 2020, yes, actually.
Yeah, that, that's okay. I, I tend to be a little passive and if the council was ready to move on, I was okay with that. So, yeah, I'll be, I'll be brief on that. There was two handouts. One of them is titled, "The 2020 vs. 2019 Assessment Summary." Just a couple of points of interest on the grid that you're seeing there. In the upper right-hand section, under the ASMT percent, assessment percentage, you'll see a, a transfer of value in 2020 as it relates to the residential load compared to the commercial load. So, in 2019, 61% of the value was in the residential class and 34% in commercial after the revaluation and the new construction that's been going on in the city. We're now at 58, 59% rounded in the residential class and 36% in the commercial class. And then, in the bottom, under the equalized values, you'll see a 10% growth there in the last cell. That's a combination of increased economics as well as new construction. So, all in all, there was roughly 5% economic growth in the city between 2019 and 2020. In addition to that, roughly 5% new construction and the majority of that was in the commercial class of property. There was also a stratification sheet in your packet. It's one of the standard things we do as part of the revaluation. We do this on sale properties first, just to see how things are looking. And we've included three grids, one by the style of home, one by the living area, and one by the year bill. And you'll see the percentage of change. It's pretty consistent with what we would expect to find from the revaluation. And again, just a couple of points on that. If you looked at the living area grid, the 2,600 to 2,800 square foot category at 13%, and down at the year built, 25, 2005 to present, at 11%. Those two kind of go hand in hand where the newer homes tend to fall in that 2,600 square foot and above category. And so, that 2,005 to present includes the new construction. And again, the grid here is pretty consistent with what we find in other revaluations. And I'm open to questions regarding these two handouts.
Questions from Mark.
Mark, did you, did I hear you say the, maybe I didn't hear you say, on the residential side for 2020, did the growth in the average, or growth in residential equalized value is about 5%? Does that mean like the average assessment was up 5% or is that just in general terms?
Yeah, well, it's in general. It's both. So, it's, it's an aggregate, which is, it's a, a positive plus five is obviously a good sign of what's going on in the real estate market. So, that's a simple aggregate of the, both the average increase in assessed value and what the average home was selling for between the January 1, 2019 and January 1, 2020 period.
I don't think we've ever seen this data before anywhere, so.
It's kind of no. Nice. Okay. Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it. We'll now go on to eight, and that is consideration of the approval for Barb to give the okay for the agreements for MNI to be the custodials of the institutional agency. Barb?
All right, thank you. So, this is a background. Back in 2006, we began using MNI or BMO as a institution for portfolio. They also, for their portfolio, it's a separate group through MNI. So, safekeeping of the securities from their portfolio or our portfolio with them and Dana is the other manager that we use. So, but what's different about MNI is that they have discretionary powers, which means they use our, our investment policy and our, and stake as the guide and they make sure that they're staying within those parameters when they're purchasing securities for us. So, the last time we did this was back in October 2017. Generally, we would go through this with the finance committee. And obviously, we, we haven't had that opportunity. And now with our vacancy with the, with the Assistant City Administrator Comptroller, we don't have the opportunity to really delve into it there either. However, just so you know, I mean, we, on a monthly basis, we're monitoring the portfolio. We're certainly, you know, monitoring the service that we get. And so, this is more of a formality, kind of to get us back on track. We should be looking at this every year and getting this approved again. So, what I had with the packet was the institutional agency agreement. So, that's the portion of using MNI or BMO as our portfolio manager. With that was also the custodial, sorry, I'm sorry, the manager, management fees, fee schedule. None of that has changed since 2006. We've continued under these agreements. The second one was the custody agreement. So, again, that's for them to have custody of our securities, again, a fee schedule for that. They do not charge custody fees for what they manage, only for the Dana portfolio. And then, I just threw in a couple of reports just so you could just kind of see where we are at, the percentages of, of each group of investments that they hold currently as of September 30th and, you know, what our total is, our current market value of just under 4.8 million. So, really, it's just kind of a prudent thing to do, just to bring back to you to just go ahead and, and continue an agreement for the next, through the, through the next, through next year. And then during the year, once we get a new ACA comptroller on board and settled and our personnel and finance committee going again, then we would have that opportunity to go through that with them and we would bring it back again next year.
Ken, thank you, Barb. Questions for Barb? Steve?
Barb, I was just looking in, in, it may be elsewhere in the packet, but on the original institutional agency agreement that was signed back in 2006, it was authorized persons, former clerk, former mayor, and you. Has that been updated to include a current mayor, current clerk, current treasurer and stuff like that? Is it elsewhere in the packet, maybe?
It's not because this is just the original agreement that we, that was signed by them. However, it's certainly been communicated to them. We, you know, signed forms, making those changes with MNI, BMO. And, you know, the letter that would secure this in for next year would, would be from me.
All right, thanks. Just wanted to make sure, just wanted to make sure they had current people with regards to these documents. Thank you.
Yep.
Barb, Alderman, Dukenyak, third district. We keep referring to MNI. Doesn't, do we have to do some housekeeping and clean that language up as MNI doesn't exist anymore?
Well, MNI-
Or does their trust company still exist? I, I'm not, I don't know.
They do. And it's actually in the, in the letter that I, I had signed last year. I worked with them on that, too. And I don't remember what the exact wording is, but it's something about MNI subsidiary of BMO or something.
Oh, okay.
So.
Okay. Thank you, Barb.
But yeah, I use, I use the language that they, that they had.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Ken, anything?
Yeah, Barb, I, I don't know. Is the fee, is it close to the one that's listed on the back page of the agreement?
The, the fees have not changed. So, that, that is what the fees are.
4750, that's all right?
Okay. So, no, that, that's just, yeah, it, I mean, it's similar. It, it all depends on the activity for each month. That was just used as an illustration for if, you know, it was that dollar amount and that many transactions that month.
Okay.
That's what it would be. But, does that make sense?
Ballpark, do you know what it is off the top of your head or close?
So, for, I mean, I'm looking at that, so on the back, one of the last copies that I included, under the expense column, that's really pretty much their monthly, it's been pretty consistent because we've had about the same amount in that portfolio for a while.
All right.
So, it's at about 750 to upper sevens monthly.
Mike, anything?
I'm good, thank you.
Chris?
Oh, I'm good, thank you, Mayor.
Greg, how about you?
No, thank you.
Okay. There's nothing more. Motion on eight.
They will move to approve a renewal of the institutional agency and custodial agreements with Marshall and Ilzly Bank, MNI, BMO Harris Bank, NIA, under which it delegates its investment authority through December 31st, 2021, and to authorize the city treasurer to execute such agreements.
Kukowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Tillman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Kukowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Dukenyak?
Aye.
And item nine also concerns treasurer, and that is the report on investments for the month ending September 30th of 2020. Barb?
Yes, thank you. So, as you said, it's the report on investment and banking through Sep-, or for September 30th, 2020. Our beginning balance for the month was $36,743,094.78. Ending balance, $34,77,563.20. Interest earned for the month, $31,416.31. That was a decrease from beginning to end of $2,665,531.68. Some of the activity that I guess kind of explains the decrease in beginning to end is, we did get the reimbursement from the county of $777,977 for its linked with taxes. But we did make a debt service payment or some debt service payments of $2,41,851.
Questions for Barb?
I don't have any.
Nothing, Chris? Okay. Nothing really, Barb. You're coming up on your busy season, though.
If we are.
So, we'll see, see all those numbers change very quickly. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Item 10 gets us to engineering. And first one's consideration of a resolution accepting the workmanship of Munson Brothers for a final payment on a project. And Mike Simmons will fill us in on the project. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, so, this project was basically the replacement of a, a, a larger culvert crossing a main road. This is, we put in a four-by-eight concrete box culvert, reinforced concrete, very sturdy with wing walls. It was replacing dual corrugated metal culvert pipes that were, and they were deteriorated. And, and so, we, this, this had been on the radar for, for replacement for several years. Got it done this year. And it, it, it turned out very well. And we have agreed now with final pay quantities with the contractor and are ready to recommend that the project be closed out, the work be accepted. and are ready to recommend that the project be closed out, the work be accepted, and the final payment be made. And then that would start the one year warranty period on the project. So that is our recommendation. They were pretty good to work with, Munson Brothers. And I would say, though, that we went over the bid amounts. This was a unit price bid, as are many of our engineering contracts. And you measure and document quantities as they are constructed and we pay on actual quantities. We did go over, and as you see here, about $25,000 over, which represents about 16% of the awarded amount. And the bulk of that was on some water main work that needed to be done to safely construct the project. So we had planned on being able to get around that water main without doing work to it. And in the end, it became apparent we needed to offset that water main, kind of bring it around so that we'd have work safely and not not have any mishaps with that water main. So that's the the bulk of that overage. And in fact, the utility is going to be reimbursing a portion of that, that $21,000.
And thank you, Mike. Questions for Mike? Very standard, anything out of you, Ken? It's your district. Chris, Greg, nothing? Okay. Motion on 10.
Yeah, most approve of resolution 12196-110220, accepting the workmanship of Munson Brothers and authorizing final payment for project number 14017.
Guzikowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
And item 11, again, it's consideration of a resolution accepting the workmanship at this time for Payne and Dolan for the final payments under a project they completed. Mike, would you like to fill us in on that?
Yes. This is the the road improvement project that was constructed in 2019. And it was some several road segments throughout the city that were that were reconstructed, rehabilitated. Payne and Dolan did a nice job for us. I guess I would just explain to the council, we've had some overages and some underages on some of these projects, and they are outlining a table on the on the report. Couple of note would be the Pennsylvania Avenue where we milled and overlaid the asphalt. We saved 55,000 on that project. And on the 15th Avenue, same type of project, milling overlay with asphalt, saved about 50,000. But the big one that that affected us was one that went the other way, which was the Wildwood Drive project, which was going to be a rehabilitation, became more of a reconstruction. So you see quite a large number there, $319,000 over. In the end, as everything washed out, we were about 16% over the awarded amount. Again, unit price contract. And but the explanation on the Wildwood was we had gone in there. They had done a water main project and some sanitary sewer work as well. And, you know, heavy equipment got in there and that pavement just did not hold up like we like we thought it would. We had planned on doing some patching after that utility work and then able to overlay that road, which is the way we've been doing most of our concrete roads. And that pavement was just more brittle than 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 we expected. And not only did it crack, but it was coming apart. So in the end, we had to take that pavement out. And again, I think Payne and Dolan did a good job for us. That project was quite the challenge. And Mayor, you may know more than anybody else on the council about that because I know that's that's your neighborhood. But it was, it was quite the inconvenience for the for the traveling public. At any rate, we do have, we do have some relief on that overage. We're getting almost $80,000 from some local road grant money in the state. The Water Seas Utility is going to be, has already made a payment of a little over $71,000 for their share of the damage to the road. And then we also have some work that was done under this contract under this amount, $42,000. It's coming from another funding source, which is our State Roads to School Fund. And then it looks like we got another 11,000 or so coming from another CIP number. That was, I think that was also another account for State Roads to School where we had done some crosswalk work on Coates Row. That was that shared project with the school district. So we were able, we were able to fund this overage from a variety of those accounts, which was the intent. But with the utility kicking in some money in that local road money to the state, we're we're in good shape to take care of that.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Questions for Mike? Comments?
I just would have one comment. It just kind of goes towards the decision we made with the whole realignment. You know, this is a good, you know, reason why when you're talking about, they were doing, you know, the water and sewer on, where was it, where the, on Wildwood. And then we had to go through. So I think it's a good, you know, it's just kind of another feather in the hat. You can work two things together here and have a better, bigger picture of what's going on throughout the city. So that's it.
Yeah. No, no, it it did turn into a more extensive project. But engineering explained it to me this way. If we do it right this time, we'll inconvenience people for an extra month or two this summer, but we probably won't be back on that road for a couple of decades. So the minor inconvenience of a few months is going to pay off years down the road. So thank you for that. And Mike, just just to mention that that joint deal we did with the school at the high school to to greater improve them crosswalks, just want to thank the school board, too, for for stepping up with that. That was truly a joint effort between school board, city engineering in the city. And then to get some grant money to boot was really a bonus. So. Great. No other questions? Motion, please.
It will move to approve resolution 12198-110220, accepting the workmanship of Payne and Dolan, Inc., and authorizing final payment under project number 19019.
Guzikowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
And item 12 involves a license committee. At this time, we'll turn it over to Alderman Kirkowski.
Thank you, Mayor.
Trust everybody's had an opportunity to read the extensive common council report for the license committee. Does anybody have any questions, cares or concerns? Seeing none, Kirkowski will make a motion to grant the various license requests as listed on the November 2nd, 2020 License Committee Report.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
And item 13 is our vendor summary report. If everybody take a look. That is for up to October 27th, 2020. And when you're satisfied, if there's no questions, motion, please. Guzikowski will make a motion to approve the October 27th, 2020 Vendor Summary Report in a total of total amount of $431,906.83.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
And item 14 is consideration of a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, Section 19.85, Sub 1, Sub E, to discuss the development at the property located at 9300 South 5th Avenue and 4001 East Lake Vista Boulevard and 4200 East Lake Vista Boulevard. Ken?
Thank you, Mayor. Gail, move to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, Section 19.85, Sub 1, Sub E, to discuss development at the property located at 9300 South 5th Avenue, 4001 East Lake Vista Boulevard and 4200 East Lake Vista Boulevard.
Guzikowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
At this time, we will convene into closed session, and we will resume at its conclusion. Motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Guzikowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Okay. All right. Thank you all for watching us streaming in. Enjoy the warm weather that's coming up. I think this could possibly be it for the year. So it's supposed to be nice. Good night, all.